Thing there and of course the river's right there, but it was completely insane. And they basically folded the whole thing. Another old skiff and everything.
Okay, I'd like to call the March 15th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Order. We'll start our meeting with the present pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, with this all, we're going to end justice for all.
We'd like to have a moment of silence at this time for the, our veterans and our personnel in service. I think tonight probably for the Ukraine. Thank you. We've got started. Our meeting procedures with our usual procedures are we have a public hearing where we'll receive information from the applicant. And at a time where the board can ask them any questions that we may have. There also will be a time for the public to ask any questions or make their comments. And then, once all the information is in, we can close the public hearing with the approval of the applicant. After which there's no new information that comes in from, from the public or the applicant. Close the public hearing and we'll have 62 days after closing the public hearing to decide on it. Almost always we make the decision on the night of the meeting. And the applicants would stay for that discussion, but cannot have any input at that time. Zoom procedure, like have everybody muted. People on telephone, people also should be muted. If anyone at the time of the, well, Kelly, you can say anything anytime, but anybody from the public who wants to make a comment, just raise your hand or indicate so that Shauna can see you and then we can unmute you during the meeting. First public hearing is on Shannon and Robert Chavir. Owners of property of five, six, fifty-six hundred Buffalo Street Extension. Requesting an area variance for construction of accessory structure seventy-two feet from the stream. A hundred foot setback is required. Twenty-eight foot setbacks variance is requested. I think, Mr. Chavir, I think we have on.
Shannon, can you hear us?
Yes, we're here. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would you like a?
Yeah, if you could just present to us what your project is going to be. Why you're needing to ask for a variance. And then we have questions, we can go back and forth with that a little bit.
Okay. So essentially what we're looking to do is create a garage that is right next to our existing garage. So you can kind of see on the sketch here, the gravel driveway, the driveway goes down to a current three-car garage. And where the structure we're building next to it is to another two cars. The gravel driveway actually goes underneath that proposed structure. And this way, the, all of the garage doors will face that driveway. Essentially, we'll be able to pull in and out of the garage and to the driveway and then drive, drive right on up. Um, like I said, it is a gravel driveway there now. There isn't any excavation required. It's simply going to erupt the, it's going to be a pole barn style build. So we'll put up the pole barn, it'll, concrete over the gravel there and like I said, it'll just be in line with the existing garage. You know, other than the five-foot gap between the existing garage, it's going to look like it's all one contiguous parking area.
Okay.
There is a bank down to the stream on the other side of the garage and there is, we're leaving more than enough area for a, a walkway and, and all that. We're not even get, we're not even really cutting into that, the, the, the level part before the embankment starts.
Do you know how far it is from the, where the corner of the garage will be there until the bank drops off?
Uh, it's, it's at least thirty-five, forty feet.
Okay, I was gonna say, I was out there today and it looked like it's a pretty good area for, for a good amount of space. Any reason you could not put it anywhere else?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, is there any reason you can't put it anywhere else on the property?
But, well, this way it's, this is the only thing that'll be on the existing driveway. Anything else would be kind of not part of the driveway. And the person door that's going to go out the back is going to have access then to the entrance at the back of the house. And that's where my parents' room is. And we wanted to have something that would be future handicap accessible.
It looks like the septic area would be in the way of number of places in front of the house. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yes, yeah. Anything else would be in front of the house. We have the septic area through all of that. And, and then we're into, we wouldn't have any access to a driveway.
Any other information you'd like to provide?
Um, I don't think so. We certainly have provided, I, I think I gave Shauna the contract. This is, we have with Peterman Lumber. They're the ones who will do the build. And, and a variety of other things.
Board members?
The key to us, at least, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, the key to us is that this is already on the driveway, so we don't have to, like I said, do any further excavation or prepping of the pad or anything else that would be more expensive.
Also, it wouldn't be very obvious since it's right in the line of the other garage.
Exactly. We, we're hoping it looks very contiguous when you're, when you're looking at the garage, so that it all looks like it was meant to go together.
Board members have any questions for Mr. Chavir?
I have one. At the, the ECB and the recommendations, I quote, said, "In addition, the applicant should identify the stormwater mitigation plan for the structure to reduce potential erosion issues at the site." So could you put that on the record, what your response to the ECB would be?
Absolutely. There's going to be gutters on the downslope side of the roofline. And there is a French drain already at what will be the front of the structure.
Were they talking about during construction or post-construction?
From that, I couldn't, I couldn't tell us the last, the last part of recommendations.
Yeah, I would assume it's post-construction. The actual construction, the Peterman folks are telling us it'll take two days to build, so. And, and there's nothing they would need to do. There's no excavation or that type of thing. So I'm not sure where any erosion concern would come from. But certainly he did ask at the ECB about gutters, were gutters intended? And, and yes, they absolutely are.
Are you talking about the?
In fact, since we purchased.
This, that's what I. Yeah, because that, that kind of refers to the construction, I believe. They want to make sure that there's no stormwater runoff into the stream.
Right, I understand that. I didn't know at what stage.
Okay. Actually, it won't be much to serve. It's going to be a two-day process and they're putting it on that gravel. No foundation? No, no. Is there any foundation?
Nope.
No?
Was, is it, you said it was a?
Nope, it's gonna go right on the gravel and then we'll.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Kelly, you okay? Okay.
Yes.
I'm good. I'm just trying to, you know, trying to keep my signal here. I don't know what's going on, but I heard the whole thing.
Okay. There are no further questions from the board. And I can open this up to the public or any questions anybody may have from the public. Don't see anyone, hopefully. Okay. Mr. Chavir, would you be willing to go ahead and have us close the public hearing? After that, we can't accept any more information from you or from anyone else?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We do have 62 days to make a decision. My guess is we will be making the decision tonight. I'm sure you have to keep, if you're having to bomb us, you may want to just go ahead and call in tomorrow. But you're welcome.
I, I was going to, yeah.
You're welcome to, you know, to wait.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be meeting minutes. I can read.
They can also email you.
That would be great. Thank you, Shauna.
Well, we could send Shauna down to deliver personally.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll save you a lunch here.
All right.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Go on to the next one. This is McMahon LaRue.
All right, thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thomas Delaney, owner of property at three, four, nine, two Sandy Beach Drive. Requesting two area variances, side setbacks of seven point four-six feet when ten feet is required. Point five-four foot variance. And a front setback of thirty-five feet when fifty-five feet is required, twenty-foot variance. For a tear-down and rebuild of a single-family dwelling. Mr. LaRue, are you?
Good evening. Al LaRue, I'm here with Tom Delaney. He's, he's also here. He's the homeowner of the parcel. We're seeking, as you mentioned, six-foot minimum side on the south side. And a seven-point four-three, I think it is, seven-point four-six on the north side. And that's to the bump out, which is a fireplace bump out. But that's, that structure is, 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 as you can see from the plan, is further away from the north property line than it is the south property line. And we placed it in that location so that we could, we could get a, put in a grassy swale down through, which is going to take the drainage water and, and then, you know, slow, a slow drainage pattern down to the lake. We are, we are not looking for a, a coverage tonight. A total, a total coverage. We've reconfigured the driveway into the, into the home. We have a, we're gonna have a concrete pad out front, four by eighteen. And then the rest is going to be grassy pavers. As well as the, on the other side of the street will be grassy pavers. So the net result is we're at twenty-nine point oh-eight percent coverage. Total, total parcel. So we're not looking for that. We have four point two-eight feet on the existing home now from the property line. It's too close. What I wasn't able to do was to get slope away on the south side, away from the neighbor to the south, down to the swell, then back up to the new structure. And, and at a slope that would enable Tom to maintain that, that swell down through there. And the same applies for the other side. We're not running water on any of the neighbors. We're not impeding any water that runs from them onto us. So, and we are, the existing home right now is thirty-seven point eighty-three from the, from the front property line. We're, we're hoping to be thirty-five. And other than that, we comply with all the zoning code. I know that I received a lot of notes regarding landscaping and that sort of thing. And, and we'll, we, we will comply with all those. And for the planning board next week. If you have any questions, again, Tom is here and, and I am certainly.
We always, we always try to see if we can minimize any variance. I guess the question would be, is the, is there any other, any way to get rid of that bump out that requires an extra two and a half, three feet?
Well, the, that's the fireplace shed and being that the home is being built on a slab foundation. It requires that slab to go out underneath the fireplace for support.
What size is that, Tom? Two by four?
Two by four, yeah.
So meanwhile, the house is, is well away from that property line. It's just that bump out area.
Any questions from the board members?
Yeah, I've got a couple. What are the existing setbacks from the lake now with the existing property?
The existing home is fifty-three point seven-four feet. And we're, we're going to be about fifty-one. A little better than fifty-one, fifty-one point two-three. So we're a couple of feet closer.
So is the only part that is outside of the ordinance, the, is it the proposed patio that is?
No, that's not outside the ordinance either. That's a thirty-foot setback and that's, that's within the, we're, we're not encroaching on that at all. The only setback is the two point eight-three feet in the front, fronting are in the back, if you, whichever way you want to look at it, on Sandy Beach Drive.
Yeah, John, the rear is fine. The lake side is good.
Yeah, the lake is okay.
Good, just.
There were two variances on this home, weren't there?
Yeah, others, others to the road.
The other, the variance is the front setback.
Oh.
Yeah, not the lakeside.
Not from the lakeside, no.
And then the north side.
Okay, so how far was the existing home from the road?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven point eight-three feet.
And you're going to, how far now?
Thirty-five.
So you're increasing the variance by about a little less than three foot?
Yeah, two point eight-three, right. We, we didn't want to push the structure toward the lake. We wanted to keep it as, you know, we're trying to build a modern home. It's not a huge home.
Yeah.
With a two-car garage.
Are there other homes in close proximity to this that are as close to the road as this one is being proposed?
The one to the north of us is closer.
South, south of us.
Oh, south of us.
Two, two houses down. It's approximately five feet off the road.
Several others are pretty close to.
Yeah, Sandy Beach is one of those areas that we've always had them, you know, had a massive variances, just because they're so close to each other.
I think.
And it floods.
Yeah, the front variances, we pretty much give them most of the time when they've been asked.
Have you had any conversations?
Yeah, the lakeside.
Had any conversations with your neighbor to the north above? How close you're going to be with the fireplace to his property line?
We did, we did, I didn't. We didn't have a conversation. We did see his note. We did respond to his note. We have a total of about, from our swell, nineteen point eight feet from its structure. So that would be, that would be, let me just, let me have it, I'll scale it.
What was the name, note from the neighbor, Shauna?
Yeah.
It's a ten scale, so it's pretty accurate. So we, our property line, he is about fourteen, fourteen point six or seven feet from the property line. And from our house, we are going to be, at the front of our house, we're going to be twenty-four feet. Twenty-four, twenty-four and a half. Pretty good, pretty good distance. At the, at the bump out, we are about twenty-two feet.
We were trying to get the, the letter from the neighbor.
Because they had several other issues that we can maybe address in here.
Oh, there it is. Stop, I'm reading on Zoom. That's Jim.
Well, we gotta wait till we. Then they're going to voice.
Any other questions that we have, and then we can maybe bring in the neighbor.
Kelly, can you see the screen? Okay.
Yeah, I can see it.
Well, people are reading this. Can I ask, the lead, that Chris Jensen had some recommendations. And I was wondering if, if you people had written response, I, because I didn't see it, to what Chris Jensen recommended.
I don't think I've seen Chris's.
I have a, the state.
Email to you, Al.
February twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I have that.
Yeah.
Do you have responses to Chris's?
We do. And we have provided, we've answered those, those responses and have, have created new plans and sent the plans into the town.
Wasn't, it wasn't available when I was.
We modified the plans and sent them into the town.
Remember this morning?
No, we didn't get. I can't read it. I don't like that.
Remember this morning?
Yeah, this morning, we, yes, we had the old, yeah. Well, this, we did receive existing, he did break out existing and proposed. That actually is true. I don't know if there's anything that was discussed other than this well about the grading.
The last line, he mentions a shoreline guideline response.
That was absolutely not received.
Okay.
We will address the shoreline guidelines and no proposed trees. That'll, that'll break it up. So we, we have that. And the home is, is obviously built, the, the floor of the garage is two feet above flood for Canda Lake, which is code. And the, the plan does depict our grading, including the, the grassy swales. And those grassy swales are at a, at a very flat grade, which, which is what a grassy swale is supposed to be set at, so that it, it filters any, any runoff into the ground before it gets to the lake. So we're not pumping directly to the lake.
I, I share Chris's concern relative to the proposed new plan being overlapped onto the existing plan. And in particular, I'm concerned with the swell and how you're going to be addressing the concern of the neighbors relative to the water runoff from your property to theirs. It is not, in my opinion, really clear as to how that is going to be addressed. So that is a concern of mine, as is the side setback. I don't have as much angst about the front setback because of the neighboring properties all being closer to the road. And it's a mixed bag there. So I'm more comfortable with that. But I am, I'm comfortable with the swells not being depicted clearly or it, it's just very difficult to read. And I am concerned with the fireplace being too close to the neighbor's property, particularly with the neighbor expressing some concerns about that.
Are, are you looking at the preliminary final site utility plan?
I am looking at the drawing that I got off of the town website this afternoon to print out and take a look at.
Okay, sheet two.
Which, which is labeled sheet one and sheet two. And both of them appear to me to be drawing that depicts both the existing and the new. Matter of fact, one is labeled existing conditions. And then the other one is labeled preliminary and final off-site utility grading plan.
We provided, we provided a new plan for the existing condition plan. And the plan that's up right now is the grading plan. And we are not running water onto any neighbor. And, but we're not impeding any of the neighbor's water from running onto us. And you can see that by the elevations that we have, opposite the corners of the building and, and at the center line of the, the swales. So we're not.
Help, help me with that then. What is the grade at the north property line?
Where on the north property line?
What is the grade at the north property line? Let's say center of house.
Well, at, at the, at the end of our garage, it is six ninety point four-two.
And what's the grade at the center of the swell?
One-hundredth different, difference.
One-hundredth?
One-hundredth of a foot. And then we go to the back where at the rear.
You're telling me.
At the rear of the house.
The center of that swell is less than an inch deeper than the north property line.
Yes, that's true. And at the back though, there's, there's about a half a foot. The, the swell is a half a foot lower than the property line. So it's starting to blend as we come out to the front. But the swell is running at point eight-two, eight percent, which is very low.
Not gonna move any water with a, less than an inch of fall between the center of the swell and the property line, that's for sure.
Yeah, and you don't want to either. That's, uh, it's gluten loading. You want to make sure that it's, it's going in the ground, not going in the lake.
I want to make sure it doesn't go on any neighbor's property.
No, we, it's not.
Will the location of the swell when this is done be the same as the swell that's there now?
Uh, no, this will be, this will be deeper than what's there now.
But how about the, the, let's say, the distance from the property line?
On the north side.
Yeah, the north side is whatever.
On the north side, it's, uh, it's going to be, on the north side, there is no swell. It's all flat across, so we're creating one. And that's why they have to, right now, I think what happens now is the existing home has got a pump in it.
Do you, do you show the existing grades on these drawings at all?
We do.
You do. I'll be damned if I can read this.
There is a little bit of a swell there. I was walking out there today.
Is that a separate?
Very slight.
Yeah.
Do you have a, is that a drawing I see there, Shawna?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it on.
I can't read that. I don't. I know I'm getting a hold of you.
No, it's, yeah, you can see the half foot.
This is proposed.
Yeah, existing as the other page.
Six ninety four two, six ninety point four three. And where are the existing grades located on?
Six ninety point three seven, six ninety point four zero. And there's a pretty good slope from the Vanderhoff house to our, to our swell. At the corner of the Vanderhoff home, it's six ninety point seven seven. So they're, they're upper ways. And so their water will be running into our, our grassy swell, which, which is perfectly fine with us. And then, then slowly going down that, 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 uh, you know, it's going to be leaching into the ground and, and then going, when it gets down to the lake, there's a little break in the break wall and it, it's just gonna run across the the concrete sidewalk and then into the lake. But after, you know, it's gonna take a while for the water to get there.
Was impressed out there today that given the snow and everything, it really wasn't a bad wetness line.
So I do see that it looks like the neighbor's yard at their dwelling is slightly higher than, uh, your lawn at the property line.
That's right.
So there is a little bit of fall there and a little bit of runoff.
Yeah, we don't want too much fall because we don't want the water to, to rush down to the lake. We want it to, you know, once he, and Tom has indicated he's gonna start this immediately. Uh, once construction is, the, the foundation is, is in. So we're gonna be, uh, perking water right away in the ground and, and the fluid loading and that sort of thing is, uh, I think this is a, this plan works out really good, especially with the grassy driveway, except for the four feet up right near the garage. Uh, we're using the grassy pavers uh, system that we've been indicated on our plan. So that's gonna, that's gonna, uh, perk water in as well as the other side of the road. We're gonna take that whole sixteen hundred and sixty square foot over there and turn that into grassy pavers too. Um, so that we're gonna get a lot of infiltration and a lot of gluten loading is gonna be taken care of and it's, uh, I think it's gonna be certainly a lot better than it is right now. Because they're pumping water to the lake. The only way to get rid of it is to pump it. So we're not gonna do that. This is on slab. We want it to take its time getting down there. I have the building just about centered between the bump out and the, uh, and I had to go to one side or the other. And so I took the hard side first, which is where the six feet is. And that's just what left on the other side. So it, uh, it's a very flat lot, actually. So it lends itself.
Any other questions from the board? Uh, counting on this?
I'm sorry.
No counting on this.
No.
Were we waiting, we were waiting for neighbor responses? Is that what, what someone had said earlier?
I'll open it up to the, to the neighbors. Yeah, I think we've addressed some things, but.
Okay.
Mr. Larue, were you all set with, uh, what you presented us?
I think so. I think we're, we're, we're set with that. I think we've done a good job with that and.
Kelly's had a chance to look at that letter.
Yeah, I've done the same thing. Um, oh, that's right. I'll open it up to the public now. We have the neighbor, Jim.
Jim. This is Max.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good. This is Jim and Lori Vanderhoff.
Um, how do you spell your last name, Jim?
V as in victory, A N D E R H O O, F as in Frank.
Okay, and your address?
Thirty-four ninety Sandy Beach Drive.
And I'm sorry, your last name again? Lori?
Yes, I'm right here.
All right. Um, you can both, or one of you go ahead and share your, your thoughts.
We, we have gone a little bit over your letter. I appreciate your sharing that with us. Any further, you know, questions or you'd like to have of the applicant or any other comments you'd like to make?
The, uh, the concerns we have are really the water runoff. That's the major one. Right now, I looked at the plan and I agree with you. It's kind of deceiving because they have the new plan and the old plan right together and it was hard to see. But I thought as I read it, it had our house four feet lower than the new house going to be. And so my concern was that if that's gonna be raised up four feet, that's obviously gonna have landscaping sloping towards our property. And there is already an issue of flooding in that, when we get a rain in that area. And that's why the previous owner put a French drain in with a sump pump that's on that side of the house, right about where that fireplace bump out is going to be. There is presently a sump pump, um, that the French drain drains to. So our concern was going to be that if the house is four feet higher than our house, is that going to create a, I guess what they call a swell in the middle where it's low in the middle and high to his side, but not as high to our side? And is there enough runoff that the water will be directed towards the lake? Cause all the water there heads to the lake anyhow. I just didn't want it sitting there. So is there any thoughts about putting any kind of a drain in there and having that, uh, help, be helped to the lake?
The zoning board is not gonna tackle the drainage issue. They really, the, the interesting comment we'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from you, Jim, is, is the side setback. You know, that, that's, we're here on, we're gonna vote on these two variances. The dock and the patio and the evergreens, that's kinda, that's not within our, our realm. But.
Okay.
The side setback is clearly an issue and, and the other variance as far as in the, in the front of the building or towards, I guess it's the back. Wait, it would be towards the road. Those are the issues that we'd love to hear your comments on.
Okay, all right. Um, when you say a, a grassy paver is, is planning then on taking out the concrete? That is at the lake side pad and making it a grassy paver pad? And then the driveway would also be that?
No, the pavers will be on the opposite of the lake. The, the grassy pavers will be at the garage that's existing.
Where the asphalt is in front of the garage or around the garage there. And I think, did, did you say, Mr. Larue, that there will be some grassy pavers beginning the driveway coming into the house?
Yes, it will be. It'll be grassy pavers. So it'll look like a lawn up to within four feet of the garage. And that's just to facilitate, uh, you know, the water percolating into, into the soil and the gluten loading. So Jim and Lori, we're not running any water on your property, but we're not impeding your water from coming onto ours into our swell. It's gonna be a gentle swell. And the purpose of the very gentle swell is to, gentle swell from a slope standpoint, is to allow the water uh, to take a while to get down to the lake there by letting the gluten loading and any silt or anything else filter into the ground and, and just disappear before that water gets to the lake. Our, our building needs to be up. The code is two feet above flood plain. And so our garage has to be two feet above that, which is where we are. Uh, so, and we're taking whatever water comes at us is, is not gonna be, and we're not gonna, we're, we're gonna take it and direct it to the lake and we're not running any water toward either, either you, Jim and Lori, or the neighbors themselves.
The, uh, my wife and I, the only, we really don't have a problem with that bump out being the chimney there. Uh, the only thing we want to make sure is, as a concern is that there is enough room between the properties for emergency vehicles to get through if they needed to be. But I, I believe there would be.
We've got nineteen point eight feet from the swell to your house. So almost twenty feet. Quite a bit of room. That's in the swell, not from the bump out. That's another three or four feet further. We got twenty-two feet from your house to the, to the, to the fireplace.
And I think that's why we, uh, we really don't have a problem with that fireplace bump out, that small variance there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, could, could you answer a question for us about the lakeside pa- patio though?
Uh, the lakeside patio, the concrete patio will remain.
No, no.
Along the lake.
Oh, along the lake, yes.
And there's going to be a new paver sidewalk up to the patio in the back.
How close will that new concrete pa- patio that's gonna be off the back of the house be to the shoreline? Thirty, thirty feet, what the requirement indicates that we could do.
Little, little bit more than thirty feet. The thirty foot minimum setback is, we're gonna be there. And we've taken to our, your, uh, your comments about the, uh, the landscaping, so we're, we're gonna completely revamp that.
We've eliminated the, the giant arbors on the side and we'll have only three foot high shrubs along that side. So it's not obstructing any view. We didn't, we didn't realize that that would be obstructing any view. But to take that issue away, we've changed the landscape plan to accommodate that request. That sounds good to us. Um, you also mentioned, uh, the board about the dock was gonna be voted on tonight. That's the other thing. We, we don't know the information about how far away from the neighbors, the docks have to be. Like, like Kelly had said, it's, it's really close down there.
Yeah, the dock is under consideration tonight.
Oh, okay. It was mentioned dock, so I just, I wanted to make sure. Jim, this is Tom, your, your new neighbor. Just so you know, it's, it's not a permanent dock going in. It's a temporary dock. And we are adhering to the ten foot side setbacks off of each property line to ensure that our dock is not in, encroaching beyond that ten feet. Glad to meet you, Tom. Nice to meet you. I, I attempted a couple of times to knock on the door, but I didn't catch you at home. I was. I was gonna say, when you say you, uh, got back to us, I said, ah, we haven't heard anything from our new neighbors. So this is the first time we've heard anything. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions specifically regarding the variance?
I do have one other thing for Tom. If you, and, um, the person with you is in the front of the present garage, there is a drain that runs underneath road to the French drain and the sump pump. If you're gonna remove the French drain and sump pump from the side of your house on the north side, what's to become that drain, become out that drain that's in the driveway in front of the present garage?
This is Al Larue. I wasn't aware that there was a, a line coming from the east side of the road over there. So that's something they all have to take into account when they, when they start construction.
Yeah, that would be, need to come before the planning workers. They're the ones that really uh, approve, approve the plans for draining.
Yeah, and seeing we're gonna take, take all that paper, all that, uh, blacktop out of there and use grassy pavers. We may just eliminate it completely because the last thing we want to do is pipe anything to the lake. Either in a drain or, or otherwise, cause it just gets there too quick. And it gets there with plut- pollutants in it and that sort of thing. That's not what we want to have happen here.
No, this is gonna be, this is gonna be, yes. Any, any other questions, Mr. Vander?
I think we're okay right now. The neighbors, Jim and Lori.
Okay, great.
Any, any other, uh, people in the audience who have questions?
Yes, uh, this is Dave Secker. I'm your neighbor to the south.
Can you please go up to the left?
I can do that?
You may have to just turn the button on. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Dave.
Hi, is this working? Okay. Hi. Dave Secker, S E C K E R.
And your address?
Uh, we're thirty-four ninety-four Sandy Beach. Uh, I've gotten an education here tonight. Um, I had some questions. Most of them have been answered. I was also concerned that the property, that the house was being built closer to the lake. I think similar to, uh, Mr. Casey, the, the, the variance is on the other side. That was my biggest concern, uh, if there'd be any sort of obstruction of our view. I did see there was a second story deck being put on. Um, can you just explain, will, will that be in the way at all? I, I can't really tell.
Exactly. In, in the way.
Uh, the view, I mean, is it gonna be set back far enough from where we would be looking?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I'm not standing out at the property, so I don't know where your house ends in relation to ours.
Yeah.
It's gonna, gonna be about thirty-eight or thirty-nine feet, uh, back from the lake, the, the break wall, concrete break wall. We're quite a ways back.
Okay, so in comparison to where the house is right now, is it sticking out farther to the lake significantly or?
So the, the current house is what, six feet?
Fifty-three feet. And we're about thirty-nine or forty, so it's gonna be about ten or, ten or, ten to thirteen feet, a little further out toward the lake. The, the second story deck, it's a second story deck.
Second story deck is there. Where is the front of the other house? It's about, what's?
I was gonna pull up on for you.
That deck then, that would extend, how much, how, how much closer? That deck, that would extend, how much, how, how much closer to the, uh, lake than the current house?
So, so the deck's gonna come out, uh, fourteen feet from the house?
Okay.
So about thirteen more feet than the existing house? But it's on the second floor?
There's no deck on the first floor.
That's correct.
Pretty there.
Okay, I just didn't know what that would look like. It's hard to visualize without being there, I guess. And there's no other landscaping on the south side, correct, that you're looking to put in?
No, we're not. No.
And similar to what Jim was talking about, the elevation, we do get quite a bit of standing water as well. Sounds like you've worked on that. Is there going to be any concern with our property?
We have a, we have a very shallow swale going down, so we're gonna, whatever water, and we're pushing the building away from your property line in order to get the grades correct. And so in order to, uh, to put the swale in, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna take whatever water you have onto our property. And, uh, we're not going to discharge any of our water onto your property.
Sounds good.
But we're not gonna impede any of your water that comes out of now, so we're and it'll go and it'll, it'll go slowly, but it'll go. And, and that's the very purpose of a grassy swale is to, is to take its sweet time so that the water will either evaporate or it'll, it'll, uh, it'll, uh, go into the ground. And then all the, none of the pollutants will go into Tandigal Lake, silt or otherwise.
Tom, I have a question for you. I'm wondering if that second-floor deck is going to have any kind of enclosure at all? Where it might, um, have a view problem with both of us?
No, we're planning on putting a clear, uh, plexiglass rail up so that you can see through it.
Sounds good.
I'm satisfied. That's really all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is the fireplace a masonry fireplace?
No, but being that it's on a slab foundation, it, it has to have a footer underneath in order for the fireplace box to sit on it. It's a gas fireplace, so the shed is only gonna go roughly six feet high on the sidewall, two feet out, four feet wide, so it doesn't go up the entire side of the house.
Okay, but I mean, if it was cantilevered out, this is something new to me as far as the deck. A structure that's fourteen feet out past where, where we're looking, uh, in the front and same thing. I mean, most gas fireplaces don't have a footer under, or a slab underneath it. They basically just have a, you know, they're built on, you know, off the, the living room and not that heavy.
The, the engineer plans call for a slab foundation to be underneath it per the engineer.
The first floor of the house is, is on a slab?
It's on a slab. It's not a, there's not a, a basement on it.
I understand, but I'm, I'm saying that, well, we'll look at Orion Home and there's fifteen thousand of them north of me and it's, every one of those gas fireplaces have a bump out, but there's no slab underneath it.
Yeah, those are, those are cantilevered out and they're built off the, the top floor of the foundation of the house. They're not, it's not a slab foundation, right? There's basements underneath every one of those houses.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with the structure of the fireplace.
Well, it does, because it gotta be level with the floor on the first floor.
It, it has, on those, on those Orion Houses, those are built up.
I know they're built on a, on a basement, but that's not, that's not, anyway, well, whatever. I'm, I've torn apart a lot of those, but they're not that heavy and most of them are just framed, framed in inside it, uh, you know.
It is a fireplace shed box, the same as what you see on the side of the, on the side of those homes. But the engineering plan does call it for it to be on, be on slab.
Any other?
Yeah, I have a, um, question. I, it, this would be under the category of a loose end. Chris Jensen mentioned the shoreline development guidelines. And on our zoning law determination sheet, which, uh, you know, I'm pretty sure that you have, the, uh, um, third bullet says the landscape plan submitted did not have any attached narrative dealing how the plan would meet the shoreline development guidelines. So will that ever, is that going to happen?
It will happen and it will be to the, the planning board will have new plans this week, before tomorrow night's meeting or next week's meeting.
We really need those plans ASAP.
You're right.
The board likes them a week in advance.
Well, we'll start, we'll start tomorrow with it.
Any other questions the board have? Are you satisfied with what's been presented?
I am. Thank you.
No objection. We'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing. We have sixty-two days to make a decision. Like we make one tonight. You're welcome to stay for our discussion. And, uh, we'll go ahead and close that down. I'm gonna unmute Kelly.
No, I got it. What, what was that? I didn't hear you.
Oh, we, we wanted to unmute you.
Unmute you for discussion, for board discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, uh, the first public hearing, uh, was at fifty-six hundred Buffalo Street Extension. Uh, the setback from the, uh, stream, twenty-eight-foot setbacks, variances requested. Any comments from the board, concerns? I was impressed, actually.
This is for the garage.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it's a fair, flat area out before it drops off. With it being just on gravel. The way the creek is there, it's hard, even if she were to move it farther, it's really gonna be, gonna need a variance either way.
So this was an addition primarily for, for her parents or is that what I, what I understood?
It's a garage.
Okay, but, okay. I thought she had mentioned that it was for her parents' use or something along that line.
I think there's a rear door.
There's an entrance that they have to the property. That's what she was mentioning, the proximity to where her parents must come in and out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a very large, uh, RV there in the driveway, which I suspect may go into this garage, I'm not sure. Any other comments? Call it? Chip?
Okay. Applicant is requesting a seventy-two-foot setback from the stream when seventy, when one hundred feet is the minimum. Shall the applicant be granted a twenty-eight-foot stream setback area variance? John?
Yes.
Oh, no, you're not here. Oh, yes. I don't know. How does that work? As an ultimate vote, even if we don't have a form, how's that work?
Ultimate votes from where there's less than five people.
There's less than five. Okay, just checking. Bob?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Kelly? Kelly? Chip?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, it's passed then. Um, let's see. Sheet here. The, uh, the reasons. Uh, the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, and therefore it's passed. It's a minimal, um, variance, given the large size of the lot, certainly. Because of the configuration of the lot and where the house is set, really is somewhat limited as where they, where else they could put it. I think the fact that it's on, on gravel and doesn't, you know, have a, uh, pad under it, uh, really minimizes the effect on the drain off. It's gonna be put up in two days, so, uh, it's not a major issue, I don't think. Uh, it's not gonna be visible really to anybody. There's no neighbors nearby.
And we consider the ECP recommendation. We talked about the environment, but in terms of way in, the greater good.
Anything else anybody knows? Okay, um, go on to the second one.
I think is a clarification, Chip.
Yeah.
You might want to just say that it's pole barn style construction as opposed to a US foundation? Which I think.
Chip, can I also recommend that you impose the two standard conditions?
Uh, yes, uh, two standard conditions would be, number one, that the, um, project would take, would follow the, uh, latest map that we received. And secondly, that, uh, a applicant, application for a building permit be given less than one year.
Thanks for the reminder.
Thanks, Chris. Anything else on that one? Let's go to the second one. Uh, McMahon Larue, representing Valenies, Sandy Beach, three, four, nine, two, Sandy Beach. Any comments or corrections, comments or corrections?
I, speaking for myself, I was confused in the presentation with, uh, format and, uh, you know, uh, what was then and what is now and, uh, the shifting sands. I, I couldn't keep up with this, uh, this presentation, uh, uh, you know, left me confused. And I, I thought I was prepped and I had done the background work, but, uh, to no avail.
I think that my concerns were addressed in a sense that it doesn't look like they are, um, doing anything negatively to, uh, affect the runoff. It appears to me that it's no worse than it was before. Uh, no, not a lot better either, but no worse, that's for sure. And in that the neighbor to the north is comfortable with the bump out. Uh, that alleviated my concern with that. And the back rear setback to the road, uh, I know that that is, uh, pretty inconsistent all the way down Sandy Beach. So, uh, if they have a neighbor two doors down that is closer to the road than they are, uh, I'm comfortable with it. I think it fits in the neighborhood.
And I think with what they're doing, they are reducing the overall lot coverage.
Yes.
By transferring or transforming a lot of asphalt into
Good point.
into the forest pavers. Something that we have to try to push more people to do as we go along.
They, they seem to be fairly conscious about, you know, keeping the, you know, preserving the lake and, you know, wasn't, they were encroaching on the road more, more so than anything, but that whole neighborhood is kind of like that anyways, right? I mean, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, so I didn't have an issue with it.
Call the question?
Ready?
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask each one individually, each variance, or are you gonna combine them?
Um, can we combine them like that? Combine them?
Chris, we can combine the variances, correct? Do they have to go that separately?
You can combine them, but if you anticipate different answers, it may make, uh, more sense to separate them.
So don't anticipate, why don't we do them separately?
Separately?
Yeah.
Applicant is requesting a side setback of seven point four-six feet when ten feet is required. A two-point-five-four setback area variance. Shall they be granted the area variance for two-point-four-six sound setback? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Okay, second one. Applicant is requesting a front setback of thirty-five feet when fifty-five feet is required, which is a twenty-foot setback area variance. Shall the applicant be granted a twenty-foot front setback area variance? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Okay, got it. I got it.
You got it.
Okay, um, the, um, benefit the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. And the variances are, are granted. Think certainly this is very much in keeping with the neighborhood, will, will not change the character of the neighborhood. I think, uh, say that a number of, number of issues raised by neighbors have, were addressed by the applicant.
And the neighbors, the neighbors indicated in the meeting that they were satisfied. I think should go in the findings.
Right, okay. Doesn't encroach any further on the lake. I don't think there'll be a, there's a change there. I guess we should probably say specific drainage issues will be addressed by the planning board. Do we have that in there? I, I think also another reason for proving it is that a lot of coverage has been reduced by switching a lot of asphalt to permeable pavers.
Yes.
Certainly the character of the neighborhood is not changed by this. It'll have more permeable area than others. Anything else, anybody? The two conditions would be, uh, the, uh, this will be based on the most recent plan, uh, which we looked at. And, uh, building permit will have, uh, would need to be, uh, applied for within one year.
Hey, Chip?
Yes?
Can, can I interject? One of the findings, I think, should be that it's based on the most recent plan submitted. And then one of the conditions should be that it is specific to the plans submitted. And any deviation from the plans submitted shall invalidate the variance.
That's, that's good, yeah. That would, that would cover it better than what.
That's what we usually say, right?
Right.
That's, that's the standard language, but I figured I'd point it out now, because you're new.
You'll have to write down the standard language so I can read it off next time.
I'll have it printed.
Okay.
He's a veteran, but he's new.
This is going, going from a lawyer as your chairman to, uh, to a physician, a retired physician.
I think you're, I think you're doing great.
You are.
Anything else? I was hoping that our, our, Mr. Secker here was here to look and see about maybe becoming a member of the board. Well, second career, you never know.
It's once a month.
That, I, I, we need to have on the agenda also.
We would like to have some more people come to the inside of the lake.
Oh, you need smart people?
Deny a couple of pool variances and you'll get stuck with a member forever.
Maybe even a town board.
Well, I'm hoping that that membership ends in December.
Hey, that's not nice.
Okay, let's move on then. No offense intended. Board business, uh, Board business, any rehearing requests?
No, but we do have to, board business, we do have to appoint a vice chair, chairperson. That's outstanding.
Is there anyone who would like to volunteer?
I told my daughter that I had to be on this call today so that nobody appoints me without my knowledge.
I was just gonna say, you're unmuted still, you can follow me here.
How about we, with your knowledge?
You got seniority, Kelly.
Chip has seniority, so, you know.
Yeah, but I can't be the vice chairman as well.
Sure you can, sure you can, you do a fine job.
No, we do need a vice chairman and.
I, I, can I consider it? Can I think about it for a couple of days?
Sure.
I guess you could think about it until the next meeting.
Yeah, till the next meeting.
Nice.
Until April, if you think about it.
Nice.
Having done that for about 15 years, there's not a lot to it.
Unless Terrence misses a meeting.
Right.
Well, also, I will not have any conflict of interest as far as, you know.
Who you represent?
Yeah, he has, most of his, uh, accusations were because of people he represents. No, I, in the past, I did papers and said that that was not real.
What about, um, John's movement to the board?
Well, that's.
That's, uh, John, John's movement to alternate.
Thanks, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do, thanks.
She is a contribution for this month's town board.
Say that again?
Your movement from alternate to forever.
Yes.
We're members.
I hope not forever.
It's on the town board agenda for this one, I didn't have it.
Now.
We just have to formally do it.
And then we have to ask for a new alternate.
Absolutely, we've been lucky.
You have been, okay. A what? So can this one here, was there, I didn't realize you.
I actually think Shannon, Chevier, she's been coming to multiple meetings, I think she was back for the current.
Really?
She's come to, uh, she went to the POG meeting, she's kind of a town board meeting, she was at the ECB. I thought she might be there.
Someone should reach out to her and recruiter.
I have, but maybe somebody from the board.
She's in the Bahamas right now.
We can reach them, I'd be glad to.
Okay, so Chip.
Does anyone know her at all?
Who, what's her, who are we asking?
Uh, Shannon, she was the applicant for the variance.
Chevier?
Chevier, um.
I don't know.
She's not, she's not an operative, an indicator, but she's very, she must get involved. If you don't tab her, I'll find a place for her. I don't know.
So we need to announce it on the planning board too, right?
We should be altering on both. Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to her, you know, give her contact information. Any referrals from the town board? Ordinance committee referrals?
No, but, uh, pigging back and, backing on your comment about looking favorably at the Sandy Beach Road variance because they had permeable pavers. Personally, I think the ordinance committee should reconsider that, and we've had it before us a number of times, but use it as a motivation. You know, if you, if you write it into the ordinance that they get a certain amount of credit because they're using permeable pavers, then it becomes a motivational factor.
And also, people have mentioned rain gardens and some of that other stuff, permeable pa, the, the pavers seem to really be important and that folks that are building down there can afford them typically.
And to think that the pavers, permeable pavers are a structure that lets water through them.
Exactly.
Is, to me, is counterproductive, not only absurd, but it's counterproductive. So, I mean, and the referral should go from the zoning board to the ordinance committee.
Is that, is that a motion to make a referral?
Why'd you make a motion then?
Because it won't have to be formal and with a memo and a.
Well, the zoning board, the, the ordinance committee took this up probably a year ago and, you know, they're of the opinion, the ordinance committee, and I brought this up to them last meeting, that, you know, we're gonna go and make these changes or allow people to do this because we know it's in the best interest of the community. Well, my experience for the last five years has been that we don't want to vary from what the ordinances are unless it's an extenuating circumstance. So, to me, it's almost counterproductive, the way that the ordinance committee thinks we should be considering these things. It's contrary to the process. And, um, so, I don't know, if I make a motion to, to do it again, I'm afraid that we're just gonna go and waste people's time and go through the same discussions and it's not gonna move anywhere, that's my concern.
Well, I think the, the memo that Shawna will prepare for this board's approval would say something, would summarize what you just said. That the zoning board is uncomfortable granting, continuing to grant variances on this basis. And, and request that the planning board codify it, or the ordinance committee codify it.
And in addition to that, Chris, I would say nearly every environmental conservation board recommendation on properties, when it comes to lot coverage or building coverage, almost always recommends permeable pavers as a potential solution.
I agree.
And, and I think for the benefit of the community, the ordinance should be written in such a way that it provides motivation for people to provide pavers as opposed to hard surfaces.
Sorry.
Agreed.
I, I'm a little bit unclear as to what the ordinance committee ended up saying or not saying or.
They wanted to leave it up to our best judgment.
Okay.
In short.
Okay, I, I apologize, can I, can I jump off here? I, I agree completely with that statement.
Me too.
My, my signal's breaking up and, and I, and I gotta go. I'm miss, I'm missing all of Philadelphia here, so.
Thank you very much for joining us.
My brotherly love.
Have a good night, everybody.
Same to you.
Wasn't part of it too, John? What does a perme, what does that paver count?
Thank you, guys.
It's not the same thing as blacktop, but in some people's minds, it would count the same in terms of, of, uh, you know, your surface, you know, how much of your lot is, is covered.
Well, I think the other thing, Bob, in regard to that, was that people got hung up with, well, a permeable, some permeable pavers might only be, might, might not permeate the water as fast as other permeable systems. Well, it doesn't matter how fast you get rid of water, the point is, it's permeable and the water leaches through it. Yeah, the problem you've got, what, what would Sandy Beach look like 150 years ago? What, what would that land have looked like? It would be, it would be cattails, it would be completely under, so there's such different variables around. You know, where you are, it makes a big difference with permeable.
And I had to remember that with this one tonight because I had issues, but you guys calmed me down and that was good because this neighborhood, that neighborhood is so unique.
Well, it's a very low, low area.
I want to say four, six weeks ago, I know, there was, a lot of lots were flooded.
Yeah, but getting back to the, the other thing, we, at one time, we were even kicking around, well, if it's permeable, maybe that would count about half of the, of the square, we were just kidding around with it. No, no, footage or whatever.
I'm not against it.
Some kind of, because coverage is a big issue on these small lots. And if you could discount the coverage by using permeable, now, somebody's gonna say, well, somebody's gonna beat the system. They're not gonna clean the darn thing and it's like, oh, big deal. You know, you, you'd never be able to run a public school if you were concerned that one kid could, could beat the system all the time. It's for the greater good and I, and I think it should be pushed.
I did it regularly.
Push, push the census system.
Just put me to the fuel.
I think, I think, I think the push coming from here, if, if, and at least we'd be on the record.
Right, and also, like, for instance, if, if Tishner Point, they have a green roof. If they hadn't had, I mean, they have extensive coverage, it's not a big deal, a green space, but Chris Johnson and I have talked about, what would that, what is a green roof, how that is?
No.
You know, if they had had some issues with lot coverage, so, um, I think Michelle just said maintenance, yeah, sometimes they get crushed and they, they. But, but the specs are, and you can get special, special pavers for heavier, heavier vehicles and things like that, so.
And they continue to improve the product.
They do.
And they're also on a base that's prepared, which I would assume, it looked like from what we had, that, that really encourages absorption into the ground.
It does.
You know?
I can work with you, John, if you want to.
Sure.
And if we can get it right, then I can do it.
So, so now do I have to make a motion?
Yeah, let's just do it, let's make a motion, just so cover everybody's.
Okay.
That we look into, uh.
I'll make a motion that we should, uh, send the issue of permeable pavers being allowed to reduce lot coverage to the zoning committee for their, the ordinance committee for their consideration.
Second? Is there a second?
Second. Sorry. I thought you were second.
I did too, I, I, I'm fired out.
Call in favor?
Hi. I've got one thing too, very quick, hope to get these show.
Let's just, I need the approval of the January 18th minutes. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, okay. I just, discussion on that, I, because I had the issue about finding the fact. I had been a little bit confused with that, at that, because we, we were going to perhaps add findings of fact.
Oh, you're right, I remember.
But, talking to Chris today, I guess it's listed there. I, I remember Kelly had been concerned with making a flag law and then there, there are a list of things that people said. Those are actually the findings, but our findings of fact are reasons, I guess, of why we made the decision we did. I thought findings of fact was something more legal, anyway. But that, that cleared it up for me when I talked to him today. Since we're beyond this, the time in which I could bring in our goal, say 78, we decided not to change anything. Uh, let's see, so those are approved then? Next month's agenda?
Yeah, we just have a, a small variance for a generator. It's about two feet too close to the property line and over the lane. And then, um, most likely a student setback variance for emergency. I don't know, I don't know, I haven't got a plan yet, see what.
Sounds like it might be similar to what we've done before.
It might be a little bit closer. It's, it seems similar to Tishner, I think it was.
Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question with the, with the, our format has changed. In the old days, we got the packets and we had the, you know, all the plans and stuff. And now, you know, what I've been doing is just running copies off the, the town stuff, which is okay. And, but I then, you know, get into questions that need to be asked or loose ends or whatever, and, and that's going fine. But I'm, today, you mentioned something that I thought about it too, was jurisdiction. When do, can Chris or somebody tell us, that's not, that's not CBA business, that's somebody else's? Because sometimes I'm not sure. The Vanderhoof, Vanderhoofs had some concerns, but some of them really weren't our business.
Well, I think Dave, you mentioned that.
And Dave mentioned that too, and, you know, if, maybe if Chris Nadler could just say was or whatever.
Oh, I should do that, I should be doing that.
Okay, well.
We're, we're so hung up on drainage all the time. And it's, it is important, I'm not trying to diminish it, but we don't have any say over that, it's like, it's.
I, I guess my feeling is that I think it's helpful for that, for them to express that. Because that will, I think, alert Shawna when it comes to the planning board to maybe put a little more time in on that. So I mean, I didn't cut that off, I guess the other thing that happened tonight too, which I decided just to let go because it was going well, was they were, they were talking to each other.
Yeah.
And I, I didn't say, you know, not address your.
Well, and I don't think, even what, what John was bringing up, sometimes the drainage, where they place the property, you know, that is an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, because it can affect.
But it's the same thing with the, the lakefront, aren't anymore in lakefront.
See, I got kind of hung up on this stuff when Chris Jensen throws something out there that needs, somebody needs to follow up or respond and they don't. And I'm wondering, hey, you know, where the heck are we? Because he, uh, and I have, I have trouble with that, that they couldn't, you know, with, with hiring a consultant and doing all this stuff, that they couldn't even put out a written response.
They couldn't, and they've dropped the ball and we actually let them on the agenda a little bit. That helps them get on the agenda when they meet some deadlines.
You're nice.
Well.
She's nice because there are only one other.
But, yes, the, Al, Al Leroux hasn't really been the most responsive. Responsive for his, for his whole.
And see, I, that's what I would say, you, you guys, you know, righted my ship because I was confused with the presentation and I, and between the neighbors changing their mind and you guys studying me, then I was okay. But going into it, because I didn't like the attitude, they really kind of just slapped it off in terms of, to me, an application means you, you cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, you have everything in order, and, and they didn't.
Right, and he won't have his plans in more writing books.
Right.
It's not gonna be. He, no, and so, you know, I'm gonna talk to Chuck, Chuck was on the call, or on this, you know, basically. And he can make the call about whether maybe even on the agenda over 20 seconds.
That's one of the things that we've had a, I'm having a hard time with the development office is people meeting the deadlines and, you know, you can't, you let one in, then you think, oh, like, we should let them in, or, we're trying to be hard-nosed about it, but it's hard.
It is hard.
To do that.
It's hard, especially when someone says, well, I'm gonna miss the building window.
Yeah.
I've got my contract lined up for next week, or images, stuff like that. And, you know, we're trying to be cognizant of real life.
Customer friendly.
Absolutely, but to the point where we shouldn't be running around chasing people.
And when somebody submits an application, it ought to be complete.
Absolutely.
And, and the changing around plans or doing the stuff, hey, man, you know, this is a professional operation or so we think. And do it right or, or, you know, get lost.
Well, I had a tough time reading those drawings.
Well, I, yeah.
And, you know, I, I read drawings my whole life, my whole career, I couldn't read them. And, but the drawings that they submitted, apparently they submitted these recently, it.
That's, that's the other thing I find with putting those up on the thing, is that we used to have our own copy and you can just.
Yeah, exactly.
Sit there and really look at them in more detail, you know.
We, if you want to see what properties and certain applications, you can make sure.
You know, maybe I.
You can always come into the development office and look at them and.
I did, but that was this morning. And, I mean, I think it's helpful, we'll have to talk about it, I think some will be obvious that it might be more helpful than others. And maybe if I see that it might be helpful, we could just, you know, you don't need everybody to have one, but could have just, you know, two or three of them for us to look at. I think that would be preferable.
I don't, I would hate to see, think of somebody slipping through the cracks and, you know, talking their way into something when they didn't really have everything together. And, because, because we don't have to be casual about this when it gets to us, you know.
You're absolutely right, and it's in respect of the board and all of your time.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Night, everyone.
I move.
Second. Thank you. Thank you.